Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order. It's 4:00, March 20, 2017. Roll call, please.
Mayor Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Okay, if you'll all stand and do the pledge of allegiance, and we'll have a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have any awards and proclamations. Citizens Forum, is there anyone here who would like to speak before the commission and bring anything to us that isn't on the agenda now? No. We don't have any public hearings or items scheduled for a certain time consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of March 13, 2017. 6.2, authorize the purchase of one Type 1 ambulance from Osage Ambulance for the Fire Department in the amount of $210,255. 6.3, authorize the purchase of 20 filter valve actuators at the water treatment plant from Mid-America Valve in the amount of $44,600. And 6.4, authorize the purchase of five remote telemetry units at five water towers from RE Pedradie Company Incorporated in the amount of $92,493.
Okay, is there any commissioner who would like to pull something off the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second. Been a motion, and second to approve the consent agenda as printed. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay. We'll go on to administration.
Item 7.1, second reading ordinance number 17-10877, providing for the amendment of the Salina Comprehensive Plan.
Ordinance number 17-10877 was passed on first reading on March 13, 2017. Since that time, no comments have been received. And I understand Mr. Mays would like to make a comment or two here.
Thank you, Mayor. Jeff Mays, Compro Realty, 157 South 7th. On behalf of the applicant, appreciate everyone's hours of service last week in giving some thought to how that conversation went on and the concerns and trying to sort through it ourselves. Wanted to, and not to belabor, and hopefully to make this maybe a little easier, wanted to consider or have you consider an amended application on our behalf of PC 3 rather than just on the, for the text amendment of the comp plan portion. In listening to the concerns in the Neighborhood Shopping District, this seems to be more in line rather than going all the way to both the PC 3 and the PC 5 component. It seemed like that might be a way to find some common ground and maybe address some of the issues of the commissioners relative to the impact throughout the community of the action that you were being asked to consider last week. So, I'll leave that for your consideration. If that's something that you all were in agreement with or felt like that was a better approach, we would certainly be interested in amending the application. And we would, however, request, if we do that, that we could hear first and second reading today, given, again, the time constraints that we remain under.
Okay, questions?
I have a question regarding first and second reading. Would this need, would this require, if this action were to go forward, would it require a change? We could just go with, on second reading, make the change to the ordinance?
That would be my opinion.
And have, on second reading, and have that?
Yes, Mayor, Commissioner.
And there wouldn't be any problem with having, since all five members are here, a second reading would cover first and second reading. Someone wasn't here for the first meeting.
If that were the commission's wish, I believe that would be correct, that you could move to a second reading today, and that would address the matter.
Okay, and then I'll just ask this question and let others go. Would the only changes then be to, on Section 2, to strike PC?
Point of order. This hasn't been placed in discussion. Does this need to be moved in second to have discussion? No? I'm just asking.
Well, I think they just want to amend the ordinance, right? That's what we would be doing.
That's what the discussion's about.
Yeah, I'm just asking.
Yeah, I gathered it was preliminary to what might result.
Well, just in a follow-up to Mr. Mays's question, the changes would basically be just that PC 5 would, in Section 2 of the contract, would be out, and then Section 4, PC 5 would be struck, and so that, would that be the only?
For that item, I believe that's correct. You would still be, because with the PC 3 was not initially included, I'm sorry, because the straight zoning that was included by the Planning Commission would still not be included, you would still need a supermajority, is my understanding, for that action, for the comp plan amendment action. It's still a overruling in essence, or change from what the Planning Commission had recommended, I believe.
So, we don't need a first reading, again, followed by a second, emergency of the second reading, now?
I don't believe so.
No, I don't believe so, I think.
Could you explain, just quickly, the practical difference in striking the PC 5?
What you, at the last meeting, the Planning Commission had, I believe, included C3, C5, PC 3, and PC 5. And so, if you, what you did last meeting is you struck the straight zones, the C3 and the C5 out because of, I think, the need, agreed upon need, to focus on the planned zones so that it gives you the ability to grab the comp plan components and bring those into your site plan and zoning decisions. The only difference here is, is you still have the C3 and C5 out, so it's still different than what the Planning Commission recommended, but the only other change would be to strike out the PC 5 and allow the PC 3 to remain.
What's the consequence of that?
Okay. I may have to defer to Mike, I think he probably has the land use list with him, we'll see. But, what it means is, is that the C5, if you go to the, from a bulk requirement perspective, you have flexibility with regards to any kind of a planned commercial development. So, from that perspective, it probably doesn't make much difference. From an underlying land use perspective, you're dealing, you'd be dealing then with the C3 versus the C5. There are a lot of similar uses between the two, including the restaurant use. The language for that is exactly the same in both, so that's why the applicant can look at that and say, "That still works for us." But in the C5, you have additional uses that are of a higher density, larger uses, uses you might not want to see in a neighborhood center. And so, the C3 underlying uses are a little less dense when you think of the broad, not so much this application, but the broader application of all uses. C3 is less dense and has fewer, larger uses than C5, so when you think about potentially future neighborhood centers, it's a lower density use.
Right. Now, in trying to align the description of the neighborhood center with the zoning at the bottom of the sheet of paper, does removing the PC 5 mess up the alignment between the two?
I don't believe so. It's side-by-side comparison of C3 and C5, there's about eight conditional uses in C5 that would not be eligible to be considered in C3. Probably the most intense example there would be lumberyards, and then there's 21 permitted uses in C5 that are not permitted uses in C3. And some examples of intensity there are both pawn shops and recreational vehicle sales and service. So, C3 is a little bit less intense, as the city manager said, both C3 and C5 contemplate restaurants, which is contemplated by the neighborhood center language in the comp plan, as well as the requests before us.
And the banks, and every, the banks would be in the C3?
Yes, there's no...
I'm just trying to get, one of our goals was to make sure that the description of the neighborhood center matched the zoning.
Right. Yes, the, as I did a comparison, like I said, there's just the eight conditional uses and 21 permitted uses. And conditional uses are hospitals, sanitariums, group rehabilitation facilities, animal hospitals. Permitted uses are automobile truck sales and rental, boat sales, bowling alleys, car washes, commercial parking lots, garden stores, greenhouses and nurseries, parking garages and lots, pitch, putt, and miniature golf courses, for whatever reason. So, none of the more typical neighborhood center uses that were contemplated are only permitted in the C5 category.
Yeah, Commissioner, in the C3, it does, just double-checked, it does list banks and financial institutions. So, there was a comment made last time that if the C5 was considered, it almost takes the neighborhood center and treats it like a community center, except for the size, the scale. I think that's very much true, but the C3 allows it to be the neighborhood center, fulfills the narrative that I think is what you're asking about in the comp plan, but yet keeps it at the right level.
Okay, thank you. Bill.
Okay. Well, speaking as someone who wasn't here last week, I want to thank Jeff for his patience and his willingness to talk about a downgrading, I don't know if that's the correct term, to a less intensive land use. I'm more comfortable with a PC 3 being in a neighborhood center than a PC 5, just because, especially in this application, you're talking about a commercial area that comes right up against a residential area. And, you know, we may just be arguing semantics, but to me, that seems much more in line with a neighborhood center from the comp plan than the C5 zoning.
Anything else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt on second reading ordinance number 17-10877 with...
Amendment.
The change to, the amendment to the ordinance on second reading to strike references to the PC 5 district. Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve on second reading ordinance number 17-10877 with the stated amendment. All those in favor? Whoops, roll call, please.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Crawford.
Aye. 7.2.
Item 7.2, second reading ordinance number 17-10878, changing the zoning district classification from R2 to PC 5 on property addressed to 720 South Ohio Street.
Did you have anything you wanted to say about that?
Yeah, since PC 5 isn't allowed anymore per the comp plan, can we amend our application to PC 3?
Okay.
Commissioners, one note that you need to be aware of in that is that, if you recall, last week, the PC 5, which is what the vote resulted in last week, was consistent with the Planning Commission recommendation. A PC 3 is not, therefore, you're into a supermajority as far as a final vote on the item, assuming a motion and second's made.
Would that still be in effect, being that it's a less intensive zone?
Well, I'll defer that to Greg.
Looks like Mr. Andrew may have a thought on that.
Mr. Andrew may have a...
That is PC and the original ask for C.
Oh, okay.
See what Dean says. PC's higher than C plan.
Dean knows that stuff backwards and forwards.
Yeah, Commissioners, Mr. Andrew can address that. He also has another aspect he'd like to make you aware of.
I thought he'd have something to say about this.
So, just like the Planning Commission has the authority to grant something that is more restrictive than what was asked for, a planned C5 is more restrictive than a straight C5. You have the authority to grant something that is more restrictive than what was originally asked for. You just can't give anything that is less restrictive. So, moving in the direction of C3 and more restrictive, you can do that with four affirmative votes. I just wanted to point out one item related to the C3 and why the original application was for C5 is because if you look at the surrounding zoning, you won't find any C3 zoning in the vicinity, or at least within contiguous or within 200 feet. So, our recommendation would be that if you are supportive of the planned C3, there is a requirement that C3 districts have to be at least one acre in size, and this lot is not one acre in size, or it needs to be contiguous to a similar district. So, we are recommending, the ordinance as before you currently has 10 findings in it, and we would recommend that if you wanted to go to a planned C3, that you make an additional finding that although this planned C3 district is not one acre in size, it is contiguous to a similar district, which is C5. And so, that, it would be important for you to make a finding that C5 is a similar district to C3, because this is not, this is not an expansion or an attachment to any existing C3 district. Does that make sense?
Is that, Dean, is that, does that, does the district speak zone to zone or zone to use?
What is unique about the C3 district, most of our commercial districts has a minimum lot size. The C3 district does not have a minimum lot size, but it says that the C3 district either has to be a full acre, or the piece that you're trying to rezone is contiguous to an already existing similar district.
Similar district, okay.
And so, if you were to, you would make a finding that you find C5 to be a similar district. I guess, Dustin, if you could put up the zoning map, I'll show you what I'm speaking So, just for the benefit of Mr. Hodges, this is the lot we're talking about here, and all of this is all C5.
Right.
And so, we're not, this would be the C3 piece, it's not contiguous to an existing already C3 district, and it's not one acre in size, but it's allowed if you agree that C5 is a similar district.
I understand.
So, it would be important that you, as a commissioner, have made a finding that it is, it's attached to something that is similar in character.
And the Commissioners, you may already be aware of this, but in our numbering system, C4 is the downtown district, so even, even though numerically it's going from a C3 to a C5 district, that's discounting C4 being in the middle of those two.
Any other questions or any other concerns?
And again, I'm sorry, I wasn't here last week, otherwise I would have, I would have brought this up last week. The item that really concerns me is the lack of a site plan. When I read through the application initially, I had several things flagged that probably would have been, questions that would have been answered by having a site plan. I'm referring specifically, the things that concerned me are the ingress and egress, you know, the right-in, right-out traffic pattern, and how that was going to affect the residential streets behind it, how the people that owned the lot, that L-shaped lot behind, how they're going to have access to their property. Staff had noted some concerns about the amount of space for a drive-through and some parking concerns. And kind of when I started adding all of those things together, I thought, "This is something that I think would have benefited from a site plan." And so, then I went actually to the code, because it was unclear to me from the staff report and then from the little zoning process handout that I downloaded from the city's website. This made it sound like a site plan was something that was an optional piece of the plan and not required. But when I went to the actual document itself, to me, it didn't look like a site plan was an option, it was a requirement. And actually, there, if you look at Section 42-410, I believe that's the first section that, or the first place that it makes use to that, when you're talking about rezoning to a planned commercial district, which I underst, this is a planned commercial district, right? I mean, that's what we're rezoning to. And so, I think that that is going to, that's just going to be a little bit of a hang-up for me, because when it says the applicant shall also submit a site development plan for purposes of depicting the character and scale of the proposed project, and then goes on to list 11 different criteria that need to be addressed in this site plan, I mean, which include some of the things that I was concerned about, I just, that's my hang-up at this point, is that we don't have a site plan, and I understand that it does impose a burden on the applicant, on the person that's going to be purchasing this property, but we're talking about a piece of property that's at the two busiest, the intersection of the two busiest streets in our, in our city. It's also a parcel that sits right up against a residential neighborhood, and I think that, one, I guess I'm a little bit surprised, I mean, do we or do we not require site plans every time we have a rezoning? And, you know, why, I would think that this one would certainly make the case for itself, that this is one time we definitely need a site plan. So, I guess my question is, when is a site plan required and when is it not required?
Commissioner, I'll try to take a shot at that, then I'm going to ask Dean to clarify or provide more detail, but the explanation that was provided before is that when, in a planned commercial district, and you're correct in the reading and interpretation of what that would say, in the literal interpretation, the practice has been probably for 25 or 30 years or longer, which would be a deferral of the site plan. In this case, and with that said, the zoning would not be considered officially approved. Your action would be there contingent upon a site plan, so it doesn't, would need to go back for anything other than a site plan, but the zoning would not be changed on the map until the site plan is approved. So, that would, I think that would fulfill, it's a question for Greg, I think that would fulfill what the language of what that says, even though we do believe that we need to come back and make that language much clearer with regard to the process. We think that's a good idea. So, what that would mean is, is for this consideration, and let me give you the, I guess, before I go to that, historically, that's been applied with multi-lot planned commercial districts.
Right.
For that time. Not necessarily single-lot planned commercial districts. Now, that's a practice, more so than a code interpretation. In this case, I think the thought was, is you have, staff felt like, as a commission, you could take the same liberty you have taken with the multiple-lot planned commercial districts and apply it to a single lot for purposes of assisting with, well, responding within a timeframe as requested by the applicant. So, it's a choice, you have, but we feel like you could do that and not be in violation of the ordinance itself, because again, the zoning on the map would not change until the site plan is actually approved. But in order to be there, you need to feel comfortable with the underlying zoning, and in this case, if you're talking about PC 3, it'd be the C3 uses that are there. You need to feel comfortable with those, because that's the part that would be in place. The site plan is a means, a logistical means to address all the details associated with how the application of the zone affects the actual development, so that's what it would do. So, we felt like you could do that, it is a choice, you don't have to do it that way with the site plan, but we felt you could, and it was really a choice that would, I think, be beneficial based on the timeframe of the transaction with the applicant.
So, do we, do we never require site plans prior to rezoning then? I mean, so, I mean...
I think historically, for the single-lot developments, I think Mr. Andrew could speak to that, he mentioned last week, for single-lot planned commercial developments, historically we have required that, but the thought being is you could apply the same liberty that you, that the commissions have applied to the multiple lot, if you should choose to do that, and that was the request.
All right. What would the, that would require some sort of waiver, correct? This is a Greg question. Would we be, would we be waiving? If we said we're not going to apply that to, and at any point I ask you a question that we might better, that might be better asked elsewhere and answered, if I get into any legal...
Okay.
...problems here, answer, but would we, by not, I mean, do we, obviously, we could have the ability to waiver it, do we, do we set ourselves up for any actions down the road that if someone else says, "Wav it," and we say, "We don't want to waive it," is there any?
Well, I think it's like any circumstance where, as you know, you have to be careful in terms of setting precedent. Precedent is only precedent to the extent that the circumstances aren't identified and made clear as to what warranted an action in a particular circumstance. So, if you just did something and made no further explanation as to why or how the public interest was served, and that's the ultimate test in all of this, is whether the public interest is served, including the interest of the applicant, then one does run that risk, I suppose. In this circumstance, as I understood, the prior discussion, there was thought that consideration of this application under these circumstances was in the public interest. I suppose in the thing that I'm, hopefully would be helpful, if for no other, no one else than myself, would be some clarification possibly by Mr. Mays on how the applicant is viewing the site plan, if you will, as was submitted. I think maybe we're all looking at it with a degree of uncertainty, if I'm, as to whether what was submitted is to be considered a site plan or not.
Thank you again. No, it was illustrative. I mean, it was, it was conceptual to give you an idea of what they've done in the past. So, the deficiencies that were called out, it was never brought forward as an engineered site plan and elevations and stamped and all of the things that were effectively being required, which I still really don't understand the difference when we talk about all the PC zoning parcels we have out there that have zoning, that have been approved, that are subject to site plan approval. When we come back as a developer, you know, we cited, again, the mall and Quail Creek at Shilling in Ohio and out in front of Lowe's and all of those, and we say, "Well, there was a site plan present at the time of zoning." And I would petition to you, subject to the parcels that we go back later and develop, no, they weren't, and that, because it's not possible to provide a site plan on something that you don't know what it's going to be. One of the, one of the things that I offered to the commission's consideration last week was, I think it would be fully appropriate for us, I mean, take this current user and set them completely aside in your mind, and we don't have a current user. I think it's appropriate for the future development of this lot, and to eliminate the current situation we have there, to... situation we have there to force an applicant to come forward and ask for that zoning. And if, and if it's subject to site plan approval at a future date, I think that's perfectly appropriate. And we would be, as the applicant and representative of the owner, fully in favor of that. But regardless of this single versus, you know, for your reference, Commissioner Hodges, I mean, we were talking about the mall, which was 28 years later, that it's finally being developed. I mean, so to ask for all of this detail before we're going to rezone, Commissioner Blanchard asked me, I don't know if we really got into it, but is that necessary? I don't believe so. From our chair and in the development that we do around the region, no. I mean, we wouldn't have to go through that. And it's our practice to not require it in the community, from my perspective as a developer in the community.
Well, let me just ask you this, because we're talking about two different animals here. We're talking about a master plan development that has out parcels that are designated for future consideration to be PC5, PC3, or some sort of planned commercial zone so that there is control over, and quite frankly, Lowe's as an example, they have veto authority of their own.
Sure they do.
The designated, designating those out parcels on a master plan development or a planned unit development or whatever the case may be, we can take, for instance, Stone Lake out there, came in as part of an overall master plan, and so that we had some control. In fact, it even listed exclusionary uses in a PC5.
Yeah, and across the street, absolutely same thing.
Right. But it was designated as PC5 so that the only other thing it would say is, okay, it's C5, and now it's whatever develops at C5. I think it's a precautionary zoning that's put on master plan developments because, we'll just take the mall with your example. The mall came in as its own master plan with several out parcels.
Correct.
And those out parcels were given the PC5. And I think that's a major distinction, and any of you can correct me if this is incorrect. But that's the difference between having a multi-parcel master plan with designated out parcels versus a single parcel, which is what we're talking about on this one. And I think that's why Mr. Gage said that the general practice is on single parcel developments because it's the only one that you know that there's a particular plan for. That's why it's generally been required that a site plan is. But let me put that aside for a second. I'll just go on to my next. That's just for, hopefully, that's some sort of clarification. Are you representing both the seller and the buyer on this particular project, or?
We're representing the applicant, which is the owner. Yes.
Which is the, the current owner?
The current owner, yes.
Okay.
Yes. We've got to satisfy zoning as a term of the contract.
As a term, so you don't, you don't represent the buyer?
Not in a, not in a form of capacity, no. They're even, they're represented by another broker.
Okay.
So, in the real estate transaction. I think, one thing that I'd, one thing that I'd ask you, though, relative, I mean, I get your point, and I understand that's, that's the line that we're, but how is the community, if PC zoning, if we're talking straight zoning, then where you don't have site plan control, that's a different question relative to a rezoning infill. But if we're going to use PC anything on a single-lot development, your oversight is exactly identical to in a multi-unit, because you still have site plan control. I don't understand how the staff is, is put at a disadvantage or the authority, the residing commission over the site plan, how you're, you have the same authority on this parcel by way of example as you would at the mall or at Shilling in Ohio or at, out in front of, you know, Riffle across the street is all PC. We know as developers, we've got, we've got the zoning in place. We know that we have to come back and meet the, meet the site plan requirements to develop it. So I understand that's the distinction that we're using. My question is, is that a good plan for the community going forward?
And I only, and I only think in two terms. It maybe doesn't make sense on a multi-parcel development because, as was stated last week, the growth is incrementally slow. And so it's hard to maybe predict and put that sort of burden, I'd call it a burden, on the landowner developer. I think on a single parcel where we're looking, it's within an overlay because we're saying we want to have certain controls and certain uses within there. When you're rezoning to that particular zone, to that district, then I see, in a way, I kind of feel like my hands are tied a little bit because that's, that was passed by ordinance. And we're, when I have it in front of me, I see it as a matter of, well, if I'm going to set that ordinance aside, you know, and not follow that law, and I think Greg mentioned, what is the public interest finding of fact that, that is going to be placed upon that? And so I don't know if that was your original question, but, but that's something that would be of interest to me, of what are the circumstances by which we can use to identify a compelling public interest to say, "Okay, let's defer that." And that way, when it comes up again, we just don't have to come back to, "Well, we just did and didn't have a reason."
Right.
And so, does that make--
I think it's compelling public interest to have lots available for development that are zoned and ready to go, and that we know that they're siding. That is compelling, you know?
Well, I was looking for something more along the lines of representing the owner of the land and not the developer, that there, that you might have a hard time overcoming the burden of a cost of preparing that level of plan?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And the reality of the matter is, and I offer this more and more, these, be it corporate real estate people or franchisees, master franchisees, they have to build five this year or 10, whatever that number may be. And so the easier it is for someone to come in and say, "Yes, we like that parcel, and yes, we can get that parcel approved. Let's go, let's start spending, you know, and do what we need to do and check that box. There's one." If we get three, six months wrapped up in, we don't know if it's zoned or what it's going to end up being, they move on.
Okay.
Because they have to move on.
Now, here's my only concern, and it's why I feel like, in a way, it's in the developer's best interest on a rezone to planned commercial to come in with a better idea of what the use is going to be, the look it's going to be, and kind of what you're going after, is that there will be specific facade enhancements that may be required. There may be other requirements based on what a write-in, write-out from a traffic study or traffic engineer standpoint would be. My concern is, is that without representing the end user, that, that somehow we approve something and you come back later and it doesn't clear planning commission scrutiny, that there's additional enhancements that they place on it or that we place on it, and that we could take care of in the beginning, which is, I think, partially, because the other thing it requires is, for zoning, rezoning to planned commercial is a lands, a fully-done landscaping plan.
Right.
And so, I mean, I think it's some of those requirements that you know exactly what's laid out before you, before you spend all, the big chunk of the building, the construction documents and all that stuff, that you have all that, pretty much that groundwork laid to where--
All of that's very achievable when we know we've got zoning. We don't, we're not as concerned about going and spending $50,000 worth of plans to know, we got to know we can make the site work. I mean, this site or any site. What we've done in the past is essentially by way of survey, and, I mean, without any of the level of detail that was, that staff looked at this illustrative plan, I mean, again, it's not a site plan. That was just to give everyone a concept of how they've site planned similar sizes. It wasn't purely illustrative. Frankly, I think it would have made the, it would have made the question somewhat easier for us to get through had that not been presented at all. I do think it's worked to the benefit of the end user, the buyer, because now they've got staff fully vetting the site plan, and they know what all they, you know, what, what the rules are going to be. So that's been good. But--
Did you have other, I'm sorry, did I cut you off on your, you asked him a question?
No, I think, I think I'm good.
Okay.
Mayor, I had a question for Mr. Mays, if I may, that I think is a follow-up to, the reason I asked the question about the applicant's perception of the site plan was not to say, "Well, if you'd said it was a site plan, I would have said, 'Well, here's why it doesn't meet.'" Da-da-da-da-da-da. It was more whether that was representative of best indication of what we know now that if the transaction occurs and the thought of how the property would be developed, whether that was representative of that or not. And again, not trying to put words in your mouth, but that was the reason for my question was, because as we looked at, at presenting this in a way that commissioners, in their discretion, could determine whether they were seeing enough to tell them whether or not they could judge the public interest, was if the plan as presented said, "Okay, that's the concept." And assuming that if, if that works at the commission level and they decide to go forward with the rezoning, then everybody can get busy with the rest of the work.
Let me offer this, to try to be a little more specific for what you're asking, hopefully. The engineer for the, for the buyer of the parcel reviewed all of staff's notes relative to the deficiencies in the site plan and the things that they would look for and the things that would be required. And the engineer communicated to us that they see no issues with anything called out by staff relative to the site plan in, in all of the staff work that you, that you saw in, you know, in your pocket. So while that may not be representative, the deficiencies that were in it, the app, or the buyer was fully comfortable with satisfying those.
And Jeff, I think--
Did I get me close?
I think you're answering more than he's asking. Let me just simplify this. Is it, is it your intent and the intent of your end client to build a Popeyes restaurant with a drive-through on that site?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I was looking for.
Okay.
Okay. And is that--
Yes, that, and that, I think, is what was the basis for putting it back in the, in the commission's realm, if you will, of whether that was enough to address the public interest as to the basic zoning question, knowing full well that it is somewhat different than some of the other points that were made, particularly last week, in some of these different cases. But not to reiterate too much, but possibly, Commissioner Hodges, there's really two things going on, as you might be aware. There's a question of, is, is the way that we're approaching the matter lawful in terms of, are we following our processes? Or, and then secondly, what is the analysis of the reasonableness of the rezoning request or the reasonableness of your ultimate decision in relation to the rezoning request? So we were just trying to present a framework in which you could make those decisions, not any of us assuming the answers to those decisions. The framework of the ordinance, I think, provides a lawful basis for you to proceed if you choose to, to go on to the question of the reason, of whether the rezoning should, should take place or not. And that's subject to a reasonableness test as to everything that you would take into consideration on that ultimate rezoning question. So I appreciate the clarification, and hopefully that sets the stage as far as why it is before you in the way that it is and why the ordinance is prepared in the way that it is so that you all can hopefully do whatever you think is in the public interest.
Commissioners, too, we put 42, section 42-415 up on the screen for you, section A. I want to hit that real quick, might help you understand that this is a time relationship issue. It starts off, "No change of zone to a planned commercial district shall take effect until a site development plan containing all required revisions is approved by the Board of Commissioners." Okay. "Copy of the approved site development plan shall be filed in the office of the zoning administrator and noted on the official zoning map prior to the issuance of any building permits. The approved site plan shall be incorporated by reference in the ordinance creating a planned commercial district." Okay. You can look at that and say, "I think that means today." But it doesn't have to. It could mean before the zoning is actually effective. And so if you go to your ordinance, your sections two and three in your ordinance that would change the zoning, address the effect of a bond, the site plan actually coming back to you as it indicates here, so you're holding on to the site plan, that was a choice you made last week. And so it comes back to you, and then when the site plan is approved, assumes it'll be approved, it doesn't have to be, it depends on the quality of the site plan, but assuming it's approved, once it's approved, the zoning then changes. It doesn't change based on your action today. It only changes once the site plan is approved, and that takes the full process and melds it together from the ordinance perspective. So that's--
That's what the deferral was for, right?
I'm sorry, Mayor.
That's what the deferral was for?
Yeah, it, what it does is, you can look in there, you can handle it both ways. You could say, "I need, I have to have it today." But you could also, as the legal counsel, as Greg mentioned, this language allows you to defer. But if you defer, your action on second reading of the zoning, it doesn't change the zoning of the property until the site plan is approved, and then it happens at the same time. So you would not expect to see, until the site plan is approved, the map to show a PC3. You would expect to see it once the site plan's approved and it's official.
Quick question. Oh, sorry. Would it, would it be appropriate at some point to go back to the language contained here and be a little bit more specific about when and, I mean, because--
Absolutely.
If, if, if we had like some little flow chart, for example, that said, "Okay, this is when a site plan is required." I know it would be a lot less frustrating for Mr. Mays and his clients, and it certainly would be for us. So at any rate, I would love to see that happen, especially, you know, as it relates to the neighborhood centers and, and when we're talking about infill in an area that's already developed, like 80 or 90 percent, whatever it is.
Yeah, we, especially following last week's discussion, we felt that that type of an amendment, to be exceptionally clear about the logistical steps, makes very, very good sense. And that's, I think, a fairly easy amendment to bring back to you in fairly short order. Now, as we talk about neighborhood centers and commercial centers and application issues of those, those are a little bit bigger, so those would likely--
Right.
--follow with some discussion prior to an action coming in front of you. But just the process we're talking about today with this, today with this, we think we could bring back pretty quickly to make it crystal clear.
Would, now, I'm just looking a step forward. So if we're saying that, because I know it was a major concern of the applicant, that the zoning be effective with publication of this second reading. Okay? Is that, is that going to happen for him?
No. We explained last week that the authorization that they, that needs to come from you for the zoning action absent the site plan will have occurred if you approve it today in second reading. The second reading doesn't become effective in essence, the zoning change doesn't become effective until the site plan is approved. But from the ability to market and sell it--
He's okay.
They realize that the site plan's required, so it's, I believe it's irrelevant. I think that's a question for Mr. Mays to clarify. But that's where we were coming from last week, and that's where we're coming from this week, because I don't think we do have truly the ability to change it, whether it's happened in the past or not, I think in review.
Right. And so, and so it won't be, if something, if a site plan never got approved on this, it wouldn't be hanging out there as zone PC3.
Right. Yeah, right. So I think what he could say is, and again, it's up to them how they market the property, let's presume that there's not a, or a buyer ready, but, but you would say that the change in zoning to a PC3 has been authorized by the city commission contingent upon an approval of the site plan, and then that's exactly accurate. So the site plan is--
And that's a site plan, and it's not a site plan for a drive-through restaurant use?
Well, I could say however he wants, but it's an approved site plan. So if by chance that deal would fall apart, we hope it doesn't, but if it does--
Right.
And you're looking at another PC3 use, then the site plan would need to reflect that if it's different than a fast food restaurant with a drive-through.
Okay.
So we do think from that perspective, you are, as long as you are comfortable with the underlying uses of the C3 zoning district, then you are fully, as Mr. Mays mentioned, you are fully protected with your ability to dictate the use of the site through the site planning process when it comes back to you, when the site plan comes back to you.
I did want to clarify a couple of things about the application process. The one difference between where you are right now versus where planning staff was when this began is that you know what the use is. you know what the use is. When this application was filed, we had a lot that was owned by Rose Hill Holdings. Two-thirds of the lot was already Zone C5. But we determined that the south piece was Zoned R2. In order for it to be developed commercially, it needed to be zoned commercially. It made sense to rezone it to C5 since the rest of the lot was C5. At the time that the application was filed, we had no idea what the use was or who the intended buyer was. We had no knowledge of that. So if you have no knowledge of what the use is, or there's not a specific plan for the site, then you don't ask for a site plan upfront because no one knows what the use is. All they were asking for was to have it zoned the same as the other piece, which would essentially allow any C5 use. As it worked its way through the process, the planning commission was not comfortable with that, and they looked at the comprehensive plan, and they said, "How can we make sure that the elements in the comp plan for the neighborhood center get incorporated into the site plan?" And I said, "The only way that that can happen is if you, as a planning commission or the governing body, reserves the right to review the site plan instead of having staff do it." So the planning commission said, "We're not comfortable with doing this as a straight commercial district. We want to retain the ability to review the site plan." So they said, "We want to recommend Plan C5," and the applicant was still concerned about time constraints. So they said, "We'll defer our review of the plan to the next meeting to allow it to be prepared." We received a plan. As planning staff, we treated it as if it was a site plan submittal, but it didn't meet the criteria that you have outlined. So we said, "We can't treat this as a site plan." But it became apparent that if we tabled it two weeks, a month, two months, that we were not going to get a detailed site plan because the potential buyer wasn't going to produce it until they had assurances that the property could be zoned. So the planning commission said, "We're comfortable with a deferred site plan." So in our report, we indicated that we don't view this as a waiver of the site plan requirement. Nobody's requiring or waiving any requirements. It's a deferral. And you all can decide whether you're comfortable with a deferral, but nobody's waiving any requirements. We didn't waive a requirement. We wanted a site plan, but it's apparent we weren't going to get one till we had a new owner. So this is being structured not as a waiver, but it's just a change in the timing. But in most instances of a planned commercial district, one, you already have, the developer is the owner, and two, you know specifically what the use or plan is. And in this case, the ultimate developer didn't own the property and doesn't now. And secondly, when we received the application, we didn't know what the property was going to be used for. So if you don't know the specific proposal, you can't very well request a plan. So this did not start out as a planned commercial district. If somebody like Quick Shop at the corner of Crawford and Centennial applies from the outset for a planned commercial district, they must submit a site plan with their application, or they won't get heard. But in this case, it didn't start out as a planned commercial district. It started out as a straight C5, so no one was expecting to have to submit a site plan. And so the only reason this is being deferred was that the applicant requested that it be deferred so they could get a decision on whether the property could be rezoned before the expense was made to develop a detailed site plan. But we, what we wanted to do, and it's articulated today, in our view, this is not a site plan. And so we didn't want to be in a situation where either at the planning commission or this body, that anyone could say, "But it was up on the screen, and you reviewed it, and you approved it." And we just want to make clear that this is not what we consider to be a site plan to be voted on at this meeting. So we did not waive any requirements upfront. It just simply didn't start as a planned commercial. It morphed into one during the process.
Gotcha. I still find the, I still think that it would be lovely to return to this at some point where we have a clearly delineated scenarios in which we do and do not require site plans.
Yeah, we definitely intend to amend language.
For you.
Okay, any other questions?
And just to be sure, I think you answered it. The approval of the site plan will be by two bodies, planning commission and this body. Correct?
Yes, essentially duplicating the process that would have occurred. Planning commission review recommends to you, and you have ultimate review. That was the concept, was to be sure that there was no aspect of the process was lost. The other point I might make, Mayor and Commissioners, the reason I matched notes with Mr. Andrew was to make sure that inasmuch as this action, if you were to go forward with the C3 or the PC3 rezoning, is different than the recommendation of the planning commission. We don't know if they would have agreed or not, but in that we have their recommendation, the transition to the PC3 would be different. The statutory language refers to any action that is different than the recommendation requires the extraordinary majority in order to pass without having to be referred back to the planning commission. So if it is your wish to go forward today, it would require four affirmative votes.
Okay. And are we taking this on first reading or second reading?
No, I think it qualifies, again, for second. I appreciate everybody's concern about that. And there is a point at which modification of an action, an ordinance, could be so substantial that it would warrant repeating a first reading, so to speak, before moving to a second reading. But I think we're in confines, as we were in the prior action, in this action. You're looking at what you believe to be the correct response to the application for the rezoning of the property, and I think that's all within the purview of the normal first and second reading process. So I think you can proceed on second today.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion on...
And Greg, would the maker of the motion need to include a finding for deferred site plan consideration?
I'm prepared to do that.
Okay.
That would be fine, and I think, as everyone probably recalls, there was the additional finding that Mr. Andrew had spoken of, that we want to be sure to include as well.
If you'd allow me to take a crack at this, I would move that we approve on second reading and amend ordinance number 1710878, changing the zoning district classification from R2 multiple-family residential to PC3 planned service commercial, a property addressed as 720 South Ohio Street, recognizing it is not one acre in size but is contiguous with similar district in C5.
Second? Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve on second reading, ordinance number 1710878. It was passed on first reading on March 13th, and since that time, no comments have been received. Okay.
Can we have just a discussion?
Right.
On the motion and second. I just want to make a couple of comments and then kind of give my own part of the motion, but give my own finding of fact. And I intend also to vote in the affirmative on this action. There are a number of things being adjacent to the residential that are of concern that I think need to be addressed on the site plan. So I hope that will, that will take place. I'm given comfort that we've gone from a PC5 to a PC3, for nothing else other than we've preserved in the comp plan by the last action all of those future uses that I think, we want to have a little bit more intimate spaces, and I think lend themselves better to a, to PC3 or less intense uses. So I appreciate the compromise and being able to make that happen. And I also feel like, while there are some concerns for me about the proximity to the adjacency of that residential neighborhood, I think the overall public interest is served by the rezone, by, under the PC3, having a nicer-looking structure there and removing some of what's there and make it more of a cohesive and more redeveloped look on that corner. So I wish you luck on that. And once again, I appreciate the compromise on moving on forward. Thanks.
Any other discussion? Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Blanchard?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Crawford?
Aye. 7.3, please.
Thanks.
Item 7.3, award contract for project number 63143, Country Club Road Improvements to AIPAC Kansas, in the amount of $959,213.05 with a 5% contingency.
Thank you, Mayor and, Madam Mayor and Commissioners.
Mr. Stack.
Yes.
Let's see. This project, we talked about last year some, and did some pavement evaluation and a lot of some public meetings and met with the property owners. And it's a rough stretch of road here in the city. Part of it's concrete, some of it's overlaid with asphalt. And looking at the budget and the work that was left to do, felt like in an access and some of the, just issues associated with Country Club, we ended up going with decent structure there with the road, but we ended up going with an asphalt overlay. Basically a major modification to it, but not just hauling all of it out and replacing it all. So it seemed like the cost associated with that was just going to be more than the budget allowed. And the structure that we'd had there, after finding out from the cores, decent amount of pavement there, quite a bit of pavement in some spots. So we felt like if we can redo all the curbs and raise the roadway a little bit, it's got good drainage, so we don't have to worry about making drainage problems on this road. One of the few in town where we have good drainage. It's nice. It's, I feel like we can actually raise the road and make the driveways work and overlay with about three inches of asphalt, which is a pretty good section of asphalt. That'll get us a good smooth road, get us a nice new look, brand-new curbs, good elevation for future maintenance, and be a good project when we're done. And asphalt just gives you a little better chance to get people in and out of their driveways a little quicker, which is helpful when you're dealing with no other access really for these people. It was nice with iron when we were able to use the alleys. That was a real bonus. When you keep somebody out of their driveway for three months, they at least had other options for their house. In this case, it's a lot harder for that. So it is something that's, it'll work through, but it's asphalt gives us a little better chance of getting them in and out a little quicker. So I did put a lot of information here about the project, the phases, and the different sections of road. This is all the bid process, so the contractor bids on these things, but they usually come back to us with their own ideas of a schedule. So we have to just qualify some of this, hopefully work that out with the contractor, and we feel like this is a good approach. But we did want to give some flexibility to which end to start at. And the Country Club is definitely one of the main businesses in there that needs access to their driveways, and they do have two driveways, which is good. So that helps us start on either one driveway at one point or another driveway, another point. So we'll work through that with them. And we did get three bids, which we're glad about. And AIPAC was the lowest bidder. They've worked on a lot of these type of projects before and attended a pre-bid meeting and asked quite a few questions, and we have a lot of different aspects of this job with, like we talked about earlier, rectangular rapid flashing beacon, be our installation of that for a crossing. We do have some site distance around the corner there at Marymount and Country Club that we believe not having them cross at that intersection is, you know, it's just a tight intersection. So getting them a little bit further away from the intersection is helpful. So that actually makes us, we're going to cross at the park, which is, the park is, feels like is an area where pedestrians would be. So they can cross at the park and then cross to the other side of Marymount kind of, or Country Club, at that east driveway entrance of the Country Club, and then be able to walk, a continuous walkway will be nice through there, and that'll get us to the other side of the road, which then gets us along Marymount, which is on the correct side. It'd be the west side of Marymount, basically, from then on out. The west side of Marymount will be a challenge because it's got a really steep hill there and some bushes, and we've worked through that with Mr. Mars and the Marymount College property. It'll be a pretty stout retaining wall. It'll be three feet or less. It won't be huge, but it's, it'll be a pretty stout retaining wall, try to hold back that property and the work that he's doing up there, as well as make it aesthetically pleasing. So we're using a form liner, kind of like we used at the Greeley Bridge. So you'll see some, kind of some colored concrete or some staining on the, with the form liner to try to make it look, you know, not just blank white. So that is the goal there. Let's see. The budget is 1.43 million in the CIP, so we were able to reduce some of the costs to come in below that, which is nice. We don't get a concrete road out of the deal, so that is a drawback, but we get a, we feel like we get a pretty good solution for the smoothness of that road and the long-term viability for the future. Let's see. Cost savings, we had some cost savings, basically, that the, about $250,000 of cost savings under budget, which is helpful for a lot of the federal exchange funds that are used for this, and we can just use that for another project next year. So it's, it is helpful that our next project is a bridge project, and so we'll be able to hopefully start that in 2018 instead of waiting till 2019 on that. So there's, every little bit helps. Let's see, anything else? I guess we do, in the process of designing this project, we kind of went with a full design, then we backed it off to more of a, trying to match what's out there more, instead of demolishing it and putting back brand-new. And we went to more of a, trying to match what's there more. That way, we don't have to demolish as many people's yards, sprinkler systems, retaining walls, driveways, sidewalks. We tried to really match what's there. So that did take more design, so I want to prepare you for, we have a design supplement that we'll need to probably come back to you with, or else, depends on how much it is, I guess, but supplemental agreement with the consultant. But I feel like they did a pretty good job getting curb profiles and really matching the driveways the best they could to make sure we don't have to go, you know, a long ways back, which, of course, costs more money. So we feel like they did a good job. So I will start with, or entertain questions.
Any questions?
Yeah, just, the original budget of 1.4 million, was that budget for the full depth removal and replacement, and was that for concrete?
It was. Originally, we thought we could do a concrete road for that. We had it as a major, it's changed in the CIP over the last five years. We had kind of a major mill and inlay at one point. Well, we had to remove and replace, then we didn't have enough money, so we went back to a mill and inlay. And the actual CIP now says major mill and inlay, but we felt like with the federal exchange money, we could actually get, we got more money. We had, we felt like each year we could get more money, and so we could do more of a full-fledged concrete project with that. So it went up to 1.4. I'm not sure when that was, maybe a few years ago, but we were at 1.8 by the time we were at the study session last year, and we just didn't feel like we could increase it that much.
That was curb and gutter and...
That is just hauling it out and putting a whole new road, yes, like we did on iron, basically. It would have been that level. And so we kind of looked at that budget estimate. And then actually, we got the cores, too, and felt like, we have like, you know, eight to 10 inches of asphalt over concrete. It's a road that's been there a long time, so it's been built up over time. So there's plenty of base there that you can, you don't have to worry about a base failure, and there's enough structure there to overlay it.
Right. Well, and then both, two of these bids were pretty, pretty close.
They were. Yeah.
And is, how are those falling in line with other projects you'd consider, like the deep mill and inlay that you're talking about there? Are we, are we pretty, is it pretty close to kind of what they were last year, maybe the last several years?
Yeah. The, we've got a better price. We had a large mill and inlay contract this year for asphalt. So we felt like we got a good price on asphalt there, and this is similar to... And this is similar to that. So we felt like it's, it's decent asphalt price. The concrete costs, because we have quite a bit of concrete on this job. It's not a concrete project per se, but we have the five-foot curb and gutter, basically. It's the wide curb and gutter that you see on Centennial now. It's our first time doing a wide curb and gutter, which puts the bike lanes out there. So you'll see a, a pretty wide concrete section on the side, and then asphalt for the driving lanes. And so that was, we got really good bids on that portion of the concrete curb and gutter. And then just about right at average for the concrete patching, and then the driveway work and sidewalk work. So it's, so far, so good.
Is all of that, when does, when does Marymount, or when would this asphalt catch up with, like, a concrete street? Is it all asphalt up there until you hit Marymount? Or?
It, it is, yeah. Yep, yep. It's asphalt as you come into town there, from, from, all the way from Simpson to, so it's...
Is it iron where it hits concrete?
Yes, that is the first section, right there at the intersection that we have redone the waterline there. If you guys have seen the work, it's a mess right now, but it's, it's about to be completed today.
Whatever, whatever you do, it's going to be 10 times better than it is right now.
Yes, it'll be much smoother.
It's just awful.
Right. Yeah, it'll be a lot smoother. You know, you don't always like to do asphalt because then you gotta crack seal it and micro-surface it over the years, but we feel like this is, in the long run, it'll be okay on this one.
I'm gonna tread lightly on this question, but is Country Club Road one of the sections of road that is included in a lawsuit for the city to...
This, this section is not.
Well, I mean, the county portion.
Again, this section is in the city limits. It's ours, but as you go further...
Right, no, I mean, as you go...
Yeah, as you go further east, I don't believe so. I don't think so.
I thought not.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't believe so.
Because it's a half, it's a half and half road, as you go east of Eastborough.
East to Eastborough?
And then it goes all county, east of, somewhere east of Holmes or Run Holmes.
That's all asphalt out there. I mean, none of that's concrete roads out there, is it? Yeah, seems to be the logical...
We, we will do a concrete intersection at Eastborough. That's the other thing to mention. So our, we try to do intersections because those are long-term fixes, but we'll have a concrete intersection at Eastborough.
Has that railroad out there been fixed at all, or?
Well, it's bad.
No. It's bad?
The right answer is no.
You don't leave your teeth going over it? White?
Yes, but no.
Yes, yes. Okay, thank you, Mr. Stack.
Thank you.
Entertaining motion on 7.3.
Madam Mayor, motion to award construction contract for project 63143, Country Club, Road Improvements, to, in the amount of, in the amount of $959,213.05 with a 5% contingency, $48,000 to Apex Shears, Apex, Kansas, Salina, Kansas. Second.
Okay, motion, a second, to award contract for project 63143. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Okay. 8.1.
Item 8.1, consider the purchase agreement for the vacant surplus residential building lot located at 2626 Quail Hollow Drive.
Mr. Hobby.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Commissioners, we bring to you a contract that we received from Advantage Realtors here in Salina for a property that we classified as surplus back in July of 2014. We've made multiple attempts to try to purchase or sell that property since we declared it as non-used anymore. In the beginning, it was used as a lift station property, and therefore, the city staff reduced the utility easements on the property back in 2014. And we had an offer from the Technical School in 2014, or 2015, excuse me, for $33,000. We declined to, to accept that offer at that time and went through the process of finding a developer to work on the project. So city staff did send out to each of the developers and Realtors within the community, a request for proposals for this property. We received one at that time from Lakewood, which happened to be in January of 2016, and that sales price agreement was for $22,000. That also was declined, and so therefore, we moved forward with hiring a, or actually contracting with Advantage Realtors as our Realtor to market the property. We have extended the real estate agreement. This will be our third time that we're in that process of extension. And they have, this is last week, brought to us an offer from Todd Welsh Incorporated for the purchase of the property. The sales price that's been requested is at $25,000, which is, the sales price has been requested, I guess I'll put it that way. When you start looking at sale prices for land in that area, it is fair to be close to market value. It's not 100% of the market value of those properties, just to the east and to the south of here. Mr. Welsh has completed his project, what we classify as Pheasant Ridge Number Two. He is down to his final two or three lots and has been able to market the properties quite well in that area. And so we feel like that he is ready to sometime this fall, build a new house on this property. So we present to you, on behalf of Advantage Realtors, a request, written offer from Todd Welsh Incorporated, a sales price of $25,000. And that will then reduce the sum cost by the Realtor fees and some closing costs. I'd be more glad to stand for questions. And Mr. Ross was here earlier this evening, but I don't see him in the audience right now.
Okay. Questions?
Basically, in that area, do we have any, are, are there parklands out there? I mean, I know that when those lots were determined, that, you know, there was a park, $200 fee or whatever, per lot, or whatever. Is there any, since it's not bringing kind of what any of the rest of them are bringing, is there any value in just pulling it off the market and saying, fine, let's just hold it, maybe in the future, we'll use it for parkland or playground for kids?
We do have East Crawford Recreation, which is about a half a mile to the south. You do have a small playground area and a convenience area for a shelter house and that type of thing. So that's the closest we would be to any parklands or anything that nature, in that area.
Across that arterial.
You gotta go, that's right. Which is lacking a sidewalk.
I mean, because for that, you can't buy, you can't buy a little neighborhood park parcel for, for that. And it is adjacent to, it, it backs onto that drainage...
That's correct.
...area too. Is there, is there a trail corridor back there, or is it just all?
It is a concrete drainage flume in that area where this, this actual property lies.
But it is a nice little neighborhood that has, it's affordable housing. Chances are, it's going to attract people with children. And there's that. The other question, two more, two more questions. First one is, is, do we have some, is there something that we have that shows what efforts they've made to market it? Because quite frankly, I've never seen anything that has shown that they're actively marketing this thing. Is there any...
This was the first thing we've received from the Realtors, as far as any marketing is concerned, other than the renewal of the six-month agreements for purchase.
Okay. I mean, are they doing anything? Are they just kind of sitting there with it?
Yes.
I mean, that's, okay, yes. And then my third question, real quick.
Gary, it is listed on MLS, I presume. So that's the primary approach, is to get the properties out on MLS, and then somebody can search them. So that means it would be out there, subject to any, anybody who's looking for a lot.
And the, the purchase price is $25,000. What, so he's purchasing that, what is, what are the special assessments that are attached to that lot that it would, so if the specialists, if, if, say the special assessments were paid off already, what's the total value of the lot? Because if it's $25,000 with no special assessments, that seems low. If it's $25,000 and there are special assessments on it, that seems much more reasonable.
Sure. There are no special assessments that are associated with this lot, and the specials in the balance of this, Pheasant Ridge Number One, have been paid off. So...
And that was through that, part of it was through the, is that the project that was, that we had, the HUD?
Actually, the, the new project from Todd Welsh's areas to the, to the north of that, and they were assessed a separate, a special assessment fee.
And any, this question for staff, any, any value in, in having that land bank for future park use, yes or no?
I, I really don't know that I could answer that, to tell you the truth. And Mr. Cotton is not here to talk about that. We've talked about parks in that area and being able to have access to the grade school, to the, to the west, as well as East Crawford Recreation. But we are lacking some type of a hike bike, walking trail or something along Crawford Street as well to the, so...
Gary, what's the size of the lot? Is it about 8,000, 10,000 square feet?
A little over 10,000, almost 11,000 square feet. It's a triangular-shaped lot, so it's a little bit difficult to build on. You have to be specifically located to set the house on that lot. And that's one reason why we vacated a portion of the easement for utilities, is so we could get a decent-sized lot, a buildable lot.
Public Works just recently did improve the, the hike and bike path on the city right-of-way to the north end of this subdivision that extends west to the connecting road. So there is access to the grade school and stuff up there.
Okay. Be honest, it's kind of a dilemma for me, because part of me says, either take it off the market completely and hold it, or, or sell it. But I gotta tell you something. When you hear all these people talking about there are no available lots, and it's so expensive and all that stuff, really, that's all it's fetching? With no specials, you know, with no specials? It kind of makes you, kind of wonder, why are we subsidizing all this to begin with, if that's all the demand there is for something like that, just from the one builder? I don't know. I'm open to suggestions from anyone else.
Well, I think we've toyed around with it enough, and we haven't just sold it.
We do continue to maintain the property every year. Last year, we spent, in a neighborhood of $500 in mowing fees to, to maintain the property, but that's just our department.
How much in mowing fees?
Almost $500.
Boy, we gotta get a cheaper mower. You got a neighborhood kid or something?
It costs us between $35 and $60 to mow it cheaper.
I was a kid, I was in the wrong business. I should have been mowing lawns.
Well, we do have the, you know, we do have the Parks Master Plan that's going to be coming up. I mean, I, I don't know if it's worth running past parks or not, to see if that's something that the master plan would look at. But I agree, for $25,000, I, I don't know.
The biggest concern is just the size of it. If there was more...
Too small?
I think it probably is. I mean, you could hold it and wait and see what the master planning process would say, but it's smaller than, I think, most of, not all of our other neighborhood parks. There may be a couple exceptions to that, because we have a few just kind of old parks that are, that have been put in places.
It'd be a small park, you're correct.
It'd be very small.
What is the average, what's a, sort of the average house price going up there for? About 160 plus specials?
In the beginning, he started out at $129, and he's up to $149, I believe it is. He's eased out a 3% increase on an annual basis.
So $149, so about $150. So with special assessments at roughly $25,000 apiece, which would be market rate for up in that area. It's a $175,000 house, so is, are we looking at...
Prairie Lane right now...
This house is gonna be a lot cheaper than the rest of them.
Yeah. Prairie Lane right now, the, to be the street to the east. On the north end of that street, he is putting in three-bedroom, three-car garage homes for $219. And he's got four of the five sold, or under contract.
And that lot's only worth $25,000. Okay.
That is the price that we have received in agreement for.
Right, yeah. We've, how long have we been talking about this lot? Three years?
We started in July of 2014.
Well, that's why, it's like, it's amazing to me that, that...
I think it's been about five years.
That's why I'd like to see what the effort was to market it, other than just, hey, we just put it on our MLS, and we're just waiting for Todd to make us an offer.
Yeah, I, I mean, when it's on MLS, everybody can see it. I, quite honestly, I don't expect that much more when you list it. What I would say, though, is, is if you, if you seriously want us to look at, could that be used as a neighborhood park? I, we could probably get you an answer within a week. And then, so if you wanted to defer it a week, I think, I think we could look at it. There're gonna be two aspects. One is, is the size sufficient? The other question is, is how much, what can you put on it, and how much would it cost to do that? Would you presume on-street parking, which you'd have to, because you're not gonna have room for really, I don't think, to park on there and use the space. So, but I think on that type of question, if, if that's real important to you, I think we could probably get an answer within a week or so. If we, if we hold it much longer, we're gonna continue to maintain, it's just gonna add cost. So I think, one way or another, we need to decide, you need to kind of decide what you like to do with it.
Yeah.
And then that is the, I mean, that's the price that's been out there. I, I just don't see, look at it.
Do you really want kids playing along a drainage ditch and a fence? I mean, I'd would have loved that when I was a kid. Just probably in the river over here, having my time.
I would imagine they'd play in it anyway. But, you know, that's what you'd have to look at, is, is that a cost to develop? But you'd have to put, you'd want to put a fence?
So you're saying we really don't need the park because they're gonna be playing in the drainage ditch?
Yeah.
I remember being a kid, and I didn't pick the safest places to play.
What, um, I guess, I guess kind of the, that kind of adds other questions when we, and probably more for when we get into the Parks Master Plan, and really, any other property that we may deem, you know, advantageous to hold on to for, for other development. And that is, is what would be our policy for holding on to land? I mean, do we consider what the cost to maintain it would be, or?
We should, yeah, we should look at that.
You know, I, I think it is, but I think we don't, we don't have that conversation on others when we say, well, what happens if we acquire that for future use and, and...
Yeah, we assume when we do it for future use, it'll convert in a reasonable period of time. And I think that's the key. If you held it and say, well, we'd like to put a park there, but that could be 20 or 25 years, it's a different question. Then, here's what it would cost to put a park there, and you have the capacity and desire to do that within one or two, three years. It's, I think it's a different question.
Is, is that neighborhood, are they, are they under a homeowners' association, or is it all...
No.
It is, or it isn't?
It is not.
It is not.
And I'm not, I'm not necessarily suggesting you should or shouldn't do that. I'm just saying, if that's a question, I think we could come back and say, well, with this space, here's some things you could do with it. This is what it might cost you fairly quickly. Doesn't, that wouldn't be a master, necessarily a master planning approach. It just says you have 10,000 square feet in the subdivision, and if you wanted to put something on it, this is what you could do. It's really it. I think we could get that back to you fairly soon. That's really up to you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion, one way or the other. Let's do something.
Madam Mayor, I move that we accept the purchase agreement for the vacant surplus residential building lot located at 2626 Quail Hollow Drive, from Todd Welsh, Inc.
Okay. Third, second?
Now that fails for the last second.
Madam Mayor, I move that we postpone decision on this item to give staff one week to come back with information regarding the opportunities that may or may not exist for converting this space for city-owned use for a public park.
Second. Okay. Motion, a second, to delay the decision on considering the purchase agreement on 2626 Quail Hollow Drive. All those in favor?
And that was, and that was for just the, for the date specific, for one week?
Yeah, for one week. Right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Okay. Got one no, four for, for it. Okay. Other business?
Madam Mayor, I do have an item that I'd like to present under other business, if that's all right?
Yes.
Okay. Jack, can you get us going on the PowerPoint, please?
Thank you.
And I don't know if you all can see, but I want to...
You need to speak into the mic.
That's right, I do. Sorry. Ooh, going back up. Okay.
I'll swing, I'll swing back.
Okay. What I wanted to do this afternoon is bring to you a naming proposal. Let's see, I've gotta, gotta coordinate my clicking and my narrative here. I wanted to bring to you a proposal for the Tony's Pizza Event Center, North Plaza entrance. With the recent renovation of the bicentennial center and its renaming as the Tony's Pizza Event Center, I believe there's an opportunity to recognize and honor the history of the center. It's also a great opportunity to recognize a leader and a true pioneer in Salina City government. I have a proposal to present to you today to see if we can discuss reaching a consensus on renaming the North Plaza of the Tony's Pizza Event Center. The Tony's Pizza Event Center was successfully developed largely because of the Salina American Revolution Bicentennial Commission. And that's quite a mouthful. But what the bicentennial commission was, was a group of Salina citizens who organized a year-long series of special events and initiatives. And as you can see from this list, it's a pretty impressive list of accomplishments. Many of the things that Salinans enjoy today can be traced to this bicentennial commission, including Founder's Park, the gazebo that's been relocated to Jerry Ivy Park, the Smoky Hill River Festival, Play Day in the Park, Skyfire. Really, the list goes on and on when you start looking at what, all the things that the bicentennial commission did. At the time of the bicentennial commission, voters... At the time of the Bicentennial Commission, voters had defeated three previous initiatives to fund and build a community center. But the civic enthusiasm generated by the Bicentennial Commission translated into a positive result at the polls on the fourth ballot attempt in November of 1976. Groundbreaking ceremonies were held in September of 1977 and the $6.5 million facility opened on June 2nd, 1979. A name the center contest was held, which generated over 2,000 entries, competing to win a $500 US savings bond. The name Salina Bicentennial Center submitted by five different citizens was selected as the winning name by the naming committee. And with the recent renaming of the Salina Bicentennial Center to the Tony's Pizza Event Center, I believe there's an opportunity to honor the heritage of the building itself, as well as the driving force behind both the Bicentennial Commission and the successful ballot initiative. And that's by honoring former city commissioner, mayor, and Bicentennial Commission co-chair, Karen M. Graves. Honoring Mrs. Graves for her local service as the second female city commissioner and the first female mayor during Women's History Month seems like an especially appropriate commemoration. She also served as president of the Kansas League of Municipalities and on the board of the National League of Cities. Mrs. Graves also served as co-chair of Goals for Salina. Goals for Salina was a project of the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce in the mid-1980s, whose stated objective was to involve the entire community in an effort to set the agenda for our city for years to come. Identifying those projects which needs to be undertaken to make our city a better place to live, but also in identifying new citizens who have a genuine interest in serving the community in the future. More than 300 citizens served on Goals for Salina committees over its 18-month span, contributing over 10,000 volunteer hours to generate 34 goals and 58 objectives to be implemented by the year 2000, which was maybe a little bit ambitious, but I think that if you look at our comp plan and some of the things that Goals for Salina, some of the Goals for Salina that were set during that project, we're still using them today. In addition, under Mrs. Graves's leadership, the Smoky Hill Museum was relocated from Oakdale Park. Salina received an All-American City designation. Local cable television was launched. And with her foresight, uh, at the end of the Bicentennial Commission, she actually established a Tricentennial Fund to help with the organization of our 2076 celebration. And in closing, I'd like to leave you with a few images of Mrs. Graves's legacy, as well as the mission statement from Goals for Salina. Anything is possible for Salina if we reach consensus and have a plan of action. I'm asking my fellow commissioners today to take the first step in creating the Karen M. Graves Bicentennial Plaza by coming to a consensus that it's a well-deserved honor for a woman who helped guide Salina into the city that it's become. And like I said, I'm just bringing this to the commission initially, and I think that staff may have some additional information for you all in terms of what goes into, um, an honorary naming and how, the different ways that that can be approached. But just wanted to, to bring that up to all of you for your consideration.
That's really nice for, especially for Women's History Month. Thank you, Commissioner.
And with, and with a woman mayor too.
Right, right. Okay. What, what do we need to do with an action like that if we wanted to take it or discuss it?
As you know, you do have a, an adopted municipal facilities naming guidelines. It doesn't really anticipate this. The only naming it anticipates, it really originates with the city, is this pure city naming. See Salina Park, you know, for example. So it doesn't anticipate this. Um, and so in the resolution that, in which you adopted it, it provides you with the discretion to amend or vary, uh, the policy, um, on a case, create case-by-case variances. So in essence, you can do pretty well whatever you'd like to do from a, a logistical perspective. We will double check. I don't, I'm quite sure that they're in the agreement for the management of the facility, that there's not a reserved right by Spectra. Uh, we'll double check that just to be sure, but I don't think that's an issue. So at this point, I think, uh, we'll double check that. But based on that, if you feel like that's something that you'd like us to work on, uh, it would be basically to authorize staff to work on putting together something more specific that at some point we could bring back to you for adoption. Or you would have a, whether it's a, however you would want to honor her, specifically the location, a cost estimate, that type of thing, maybe a timeline. Give you something that, with a detail that you could approve at some point in the future. And then, uh, if you do that, then, uh, in the future, then could make it happen.
Is there consensus on, a consensus on the commission?
Yes, I'm good with that.
With that?
Okay.
What, what would, what would a timeline look like on something like this? And I ask just because I know that we've named two other things at the Bicentennial Center. So is that property already designated as eligible?
I don't, again, the eligibility designation is just a step in your naming guidelines. I think, because it doesn't anticipate it, I think you're just gonna vary out of that altogether when you wanna self-initiate. So again, the thing that we just wanna be sure of is that there's not a provision in the Spectra agreement that would somehow limit this. I don't think there is.
You could bring back something pretty soon.
Yeah, I think the, the first question is, is, it's the, it's the artistic piece of, uh, in what form would the honor take place? Physically, that will probably take longer than anything. And once you have that and presuming that it's within a cost that you feel is reasonable, installation of those things usually isn't too big a deal. Uh, then there's lead time if, for what would be the celebration, uh, to unveil it in essence and have, uh, assume have public there for that. Um, that usually takes a little time just to provide notice for people who might wanna travel to attend. So those are the two pieces, really come up with exactly what you wanna do. Uh, bring it back, make sure it's acceptable, you approve it, and then the notification of the event. So I, I'm gonna speculate and say fall would be pretty nice. You could do it maybe in the summer if, if you didn't mind the heat, but fall would give, should give you plenty of time.
So River Festival is out?
Maybe not.
I can't say it's out, but, uh, you know, if the, if the concept that you want, if the, if the application, how you wanna do it is known pretty quickly, then I think it can move pretty fast. It's just, that's probably the biggest factor.
Right.
So, yeah, I mean, we could shoot for that.
Okay. I was just thinking it would, since she was involved with so many different things, one of which being the Smoky Hill River Festival, it would be nice if we could tie it into, to the festival or to, um, the Fourth of July or something like that. I thought that that would be appropriate and I probably haven't given us enough time to do it. But gotta, if you don't ask, you, I, you can't be told no.
Yeah. Well, like I said, once you know exactly what you wanna do and then we look at how long it takes to fabricate that, um, that's gonna be the key. Because once you know that, you can pretty, and, and, you know, wanna get yourself too tight. But at that point, you can start sending out invitations if you have a date picked. So it might be doable.
I suppose if worse came to worse, could we just do like a facsimile plaque to hold the place if it takes longer to, to fabricate or something like that? I mean, I don't wanna push too hard, but.
If that's what you'd like to do, you certainly can.
Okay. I don't wanna push that hard, but I guess I kinda am.
Yeah. It's, it's not that big a deal for us to say, I mean, you, typically when you're gonna put anything in the ground, you're gonna do utility locates and all that kinda stuff to make sure the location works. If it's in dirt, it's a little different than if it's in concrete, but it's not that big a deal. The construction part of putting something in is not that big a deal normally. So the time will just be simply deciding what you wanna put there. How long will it take to have that fabricated? And then have her from your notice date to the date of the event. And like I said, those can overlap once you have clarity to what you wanna have in there and the time it takes. So.
Thank you. So I think the consensus is we'd like to go ahead with that.
Good. And we'll, we'll work on trying to, uh, figure out what you wanna do. And it's possibility, at some point, we may bring that concept back with an estimate of just the fabrication and kinda fill in the rest of the blanks for you, just to make sure everybody's on the same track. So I think there are probably ideas out there and we'll let those ideas drive us, so.
Thank you.
Move adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.